Good evening. I would like to call the meeting of the Planning Commission to order. Today's date is August eighth, two thousand and twenty-two, and the time is six oh three P M. Commissioner Hernandez, could you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the visible will be the team and justice for all.
Thank you, sir. Planning Secretary, may we have the roll call, please?
Commissioner Hernandez. Commissioner Hernandez.
Here.
Commissioner Rounds.
Here.
Isha Carvahal.
Here.
And Chair Jimenez.
Here.
You have a question.
Thank you. Ex parte communications. This section is intended to allow all officials the opportunity to reveal any disclosure regarding site visits or ex parte communications about public hearings. Are there any ex parte communications to report?
I have none.
I have done.
Commissioner Carvahal, none.
And I have none. Item number five, public comments. Public comments are now open to anyone joining us through Zoom. You can raise, use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda or not on the agenda, except for comments. Except for comments for public comment. The Planning Commission Secretary will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. Please note that you will have three minutes to speak. Planning Secretary, any one wishing to speak tonight? Okay, thank you. I will now close public comments and move on to the next item. Item number six, minutes. Approval of minutes for the July eleventh, two thousand and twenty-two Planning Commission meeting. Can I get a motion in a second for approval of minutes, please?
I'll move that we approve the July eleventh minutes.
Hold on a second.
Motion by Commissioner Hernandez, second by Commissioner Rounds. All in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? So ordered. Item number seven, public hearing. Categorically exempt. Guidelines, section one, five, three, zero, one, class one, conditional use permit, case number eight, two, six. A request for approval to establish, operate, and maintain an on-demand retail store with delivery service for grocery and household items on property located at one, four, nine, four, four Shoemaker Avenue, Unit One. A P N, seven thousand, five, dash, zero, zero, one, dash, zero, three, eight, within the M two heavy manufacturing zone. Door Dash Essential LLC. I would like to call upon Associate Planner Jimmy Wong to please present item number seven.
Hello. Good evening, Commissioner. Item number seven, conditional use permit, case number, number eight, two, six. The location for the request, conditional use permit is located at one, four, nine, four, four Shoemaker Avenue, Unit I. General plan land use destination is industrial. The zoning for a property is M two, and the applicant is Door Dash Essential LLC. So a little background on the requests and the property. The subject property is approximately three point nine, seven acre, currently developed with three building. Estimate building area for all three building is around one hundred fifty-nine thousand square feet. The applicant Door Dash Essential LLC is proposing to occupy one of the unit, Unit I, approximately six thousand, eight hundred and eight square feet for a commercial and service type use. It's go-go under to use as a dash mark. So a dash mark is part of Door Dash on-demand delivery service that provide grocery specialty and household item. Zoning request according to section one, five, five, point, two, four, three, K. Any type of surface retail use located within the M two zone will require conditional use permit and approval from the Commissioner. And that's the reason for the request for conditional use permit. Little background on the operation. Door Dash operation will hire around fifteen to twenty-five employee. The largest shift will be two to six employee onsite at any given time. So dasher or commerce, customer will order, the order, will pick up the order at any given time. Usually, the high demand hour is from evening to midnight. And it should be noted, at this time, Dashmark is proposing to operate twenty-four hour. There are no restriction in our city for operating hour. So at this time, they are requesting to be twenty-four hour. So the way Dashmark orders, customer would typically place it on using the Door Dash app, either on the phone, computer, or personal device. After receiving the order, Dashmark employee will pick up the item and make it available for pickup for the customer or the dasher. Approximately, according to the applicant, one hundred fifty to three hundred order per day, with most of the order being in the eve, uh, evening to midnight. So the Dashmark inventory will be, will include all prepackaged food and other consumer packaging household item, typically similar to a grocery store and a convenience store. So deliver of the inventory will occur from eight A M. to four P M., which is outside the peak operating hour for the Dashmark. Dashmark right currently is not seeking for any alcohol sale license. However, in the future, they are, they are planning for them to sell alcohol, and at that time, they will need to get a alcohol conditional use permit and a A B C license from the state. So for parking, Dashmark will utilize the existing parking, which is ten stall. Two to six employee will be there per shift. And it should be noted that a traffic study was conducted and submitted to our public work department. And according to our city traffic engineer, the popo use will not significantly impact the surrounding street system. Here is the existing and the proposed floor plan. The applicant will be utilizing the existing floor plan with no change to the exterior. They will be installing rack for their inventory and converting one of the office into a pickup area for the dasher and customer. For C Q review, staff found that the proposed use is category exempt pursuant to section one, five, three, oh, one, class one for existing facility. The proposed use will utilize existing unit space. There are no expansion. The only work involved will be tenant improvement. And a traffic, uh, traffic study was submitted to the city, and there's no impact according to the traffic analysis. A public hearing notice will mail out to five hundred feet radius on July twenty-six, two thousand and twenty-two, and was posted on City Hall, Town Center Hall, and the library. And it was also published in the video dating news, and no comment was received as of today. The finding for the proposed use, staff find the proposed you will not be detrimental to person or property in the immediate facility. It will not adversely affect the city in general. The city traffic engineer have concluded that the proposed use will not affect, will not significantly impact the traffic and circulation. And the proposed use will employ fifteen to twenty-five employee with two to six employee working onsite per shift. And the ten parking stall allocated for Dashmark will be sufficient for the parking. Dashmark is not a standard retail storefront. Most sale are conducted by delivery directly to the customer by the app, the Door Dash application, which mean the facility operates similar to a catering service warehouse or parcel delivery service. And those type of use are permitted within the M two zone district. And lastly, the applicant intend to just interior remodel of the existing unit, and there are no change to the exterior of the building. Staff recommend that the Commissioner find the proposed conditional use permit exempt from C Q pursuant to section one, five, three, oh, one, class one for existing facility. Approved conditional use permit eight, two, six, subject to the condition, stay within the resolution and adopt resolution number two, one, three, dash, two, oh, two, two, which incorporate the Planning Commission finding and action regarding this matter. And that conclude my presentation. I have the applicant from Door Dash on Zoom. If you have any question related to the operation.
Thank you. Do any of the Commissioners have any questions on this item?
Go ahead, Johnny.
So they're, they're going to occupy an existing building, so they're exempt from C Q? But they're a new resident? So is, is that what it is?
Yeah, they go be utilizing existing unit within a existing building. The reason why they are exempt from C Q is the use does not provide, does not create significant impact to the surrounding. The only concern we really have is traffic, because it is a retail type use. Bring a lot of food traffic. However, based on the submitted traffic study, our city engineer conclude that the, the use will not create a significant impact that will require them to do further study.
Okay, thank you, Jimmy.
Rounds?
I have a couple of questions. One, because they're going to be open twenty-four hours a day, is there a, anything in the C U P requiring any type of security or lighting?
I believe there is a lighting requirement as part of the police service condition. I think Lewis will be.
About a security cameras. I, my concern is where it's located. And you've got, I think, the riverbed there or something, or river channel, and just the area itself. If they're able to, say, at three o'clock in the morning, have a camera that's, they can see who's coming in and out of the business, that somebody is coming into the business. They could do that on their own, then.
And I agree, there's some, some concern about that area there.
Okay, another question I have, it sounded like, I mean, I don't know how much variety of product they're going to have, because it's not that big. And I think I heard, or I did hear, prepackaged, or all of their items prepackaged? Or, or, I mean, I'm guessing it's fruit. I mean, it's food. Do they have, like, fresh fruit and vegetables and, and something like that?
I would need to ask the applicant, based on my experience using Dashmark, they do provide some type of fruit or vegetable. But I, I can't guarantee, I need to ask the applicant if this location would do the same.
Well, I guess it is. Another question, since they are dealing with food, I'm sure they have to get a health permit, and it's monitored by the Health Department.
I believe so, but I'll have the applicant answer, and I just want to include that any type of meat or fish will not, will need to have the own conditional use permit. So at this time, based on the current C U P, they can't have any meat or fish to be sold in this location.
Okay. That's the questions I have right now.
Commissioner Carvahal, any questions?
Yes, sir, thank you. I first wanted to say, I couldn't hear via Zoom when Mr. Colazo was talking. I guess he was speaking from the audience. So I'd appreciate if anybody, we ask them to come up to the podium so others can listen. My question would be for, with regards, since it's, since an online store, but yet people can go there. Are we going to get taxes off this? Or are we not, as opposed to like with Fashion Nova? How does that play? Because technically, I'm hearing people can go pick up as well. So since they're picking up, even though it's online, are we going to get something?
I don't think, I, I don't have the answer to that question, because it is in a gray area where is the point of sale is located in Santa Fe Springs. However, it is an online type of sale. I can't, I don't know if the applicant have the answer to that. I can't, we can have him speak if he know will the tax revenue go to the city or consider online sale.
Okay, if you could ask him for me, please, I appreciate it.
Okay. I would like to open public hearing at six nineteen. Is there anyone from the audience wishing to speak on this matter? If so, please approach the podium or use the raise hand function. Okay, Caitlin, could you please state your name and city of residence for the record? And please note, there is a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
Hi, everyone. My name is Caitlin Sikora, and I am in-house counsel for Door Dash and Door Dash Essentials. And I'm a real estate attorney by trade, so I work on all our leasing and all things real estate for our Dashmarks across the U S. So if it's okay, I was just hoping to maybe answer and provide a little more context on a couple of your questions.
Okay, great.
And I'll start with last first, and if I miss anything, please let me know. And on the taxes question, our point of sale is generally the store itself at this time. So you guys would be receiving taxes for, like, point of sale, right? In my experience, and I would, of course, defer to our tenants team and our finance team. But when I have asked the question, that's the response I've gotten when I've worked with other cities. That's, that's how, that's the information that I've received when that question's been asked. Also, I would, I'm, I'm sure all the consumers that will be using the Dashmark are also located in Santa Fe Springs, which it's my understanding the only other, you know, taxable event would be the consumer's location, right? So both would, to my understanding, be in Santa Fe Springs. So the taxes, that's the taxes question. On the prepackaged goods, it's a great question. We do sell fresh fruit and vegetables. So, you know, you can buy your bananas or kind of things like that. And that will be part of our inventory at the Dashmark store. I think that's what I had written down from questions, but is there anything else that, you know, anything I missed that you guys asked?
The other question I had was if you have to be regulated by the Health Department.
Oh, yes, yes, great question. And yes, we get all our health permits for all of our Dashmarks. So I, I don't know where we are now, but my guess is we may have already applied and gotten that here, or the, the business team may just be waiting to get our C U Ps. But we do, as part of our process, always get health permits. We secure those before we begin operations and open the door to customers and consumers in the public.
I have one additional question. What is your, your area that you're going to service? Do you go on X amount of miles from where the, the store is at?
Yeah, it's usually by X amount of miles. I am not entirely certain on this. It's usually three to five miles generally for kind of our, our radii.
Well, just knowing that area down there, so you're going to be servicing more of Cerritos and Norwalk than Santa Fe Springs. Okay, thank you.
Planning Secretary, any other raised hands or speakers wishing to speak? Okay, thank you. I would like to close the public hearing at six twenty-three P M. And could I get a motion in a second for item number seven?
Commissioner Rounds will motion to approve.
Commissioner Hernandez will second it.
Great, move by Commissioner Round, second by Commissioner Hernandez. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please. Aye.
Commissioner Round?
Aye.
Mr. Carvahal?
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye. So ordered. Planning Attorney Christie Smith, please.
Thank you, Chair. The Commission's action on this item shall become effective fourteen days after receipt of the applicant a written notice of the Commission's action. The applicant and or any other interested party may file an appeal of the Commission's action to the City Council. The appeal must be in writing and filed with the city clerk within the previously mentioned fourteen-day period. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to item number eight, consent item. Consent agenda items are considered routine matters which may be enacted by one motion and roll call vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately by the Planning Commission. We have consent item A, alcohol sales conditional use permit, case number eighteen, and consent item B, conditional use permit, case number seven, five, three, dash, two. For consent items A A and A B, is there a motion in a second?
Commissioner Carvahal, I move consent agenda.
Commissioner Rounds will second.
Great. Motion by Commissioner Carvahal and second by Commissioner Rounds. Planning Secretary, roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Aye.
Commissioner Round?
Aye.
Aye.
Chair Jimenez?
Aye. So ordered. Item number nine, presentation. Update on Senate Bill seven, four, three, implementation. A presentation by the consulting firm of Fehr and Peers on the proposed C Q and non-C Q methods of reviewing transportation-related impacts in Santa Fe Springs. I would like to call upon Assistant Director Kwan Nguyen to please present item number nine.
Evening, Chair Jimenez and members of the Planning Commission. If you recall, Senate Bill seven, forty-three, which was passed in two thousand and thirteen, it changed how transportation impacts are measured for C Q purposes. And on March thirteenth, Fehr and Peers was before you. They gave a brief presentation to provide the planning commissioners with a general overview of S B seven, forty-three, as well as a quick outline of the implementation process. Staff has continued to work with Fehr and Peers since March, and we have developed D M T metrics and thresholds, as well as options for land use projects in the city of Santa Fe Springs, including mitigation options and various screening options. So tonight, Fehr and Peers will provide the Commission with an update of the progress, including detailed overview of both the C Q and non-C Q methods for reviewing transportation projects. So without further ado, I'd like to introduce Sarah Brandonberg, who will be providing you with tonight's presentation.
Good evening, Sarah Brandonberg with Fehr and Peers. It's a pleasure to spend some time with you tonight, talking about transportation studies in Santa Fe Springs. So we're just going to dive right in here and first start with an, with an overview of what Senate Bill seventy, seven, forty-three is all about. So S B seven, forty-three is really changing the way we look at transportation impacts under the state's environmental law. So under C Q, for many, many years, we considered a transportation impact to be an impact really caused by, by and to drivers. So thinking of how our roadways operate, how much congestion are you experiencing as a driver? When a new project comes, is that congestion going to increase? And what the state has said is, while that may be an impact or an inconvenience to people driving, it's not the true environmental consequence of building a project. So they have advised and actually required us to shift to this new metric of vehicle miles of travel. And so when you consider vehicle miles travel, it's all of the number of vehicles generated by a project, but also takes into account how far are all of those cars going from their origin or destination. So for example, if you built a little, you know, store on the corner that sells milk and groceries, you know, people might be driving by there on their way home from work, stopping by. It doesn't generate, might, maybe a lot of people are stopping by and parking and picking something up, but it's not generating a lot of V M T in and of itself, right? It's kind of a complimentary use versus, let's say, you're building a big new employment center. People are going to be driving there from work. They could be driving fifteen miles for their commute. That type of project can generate a lot of V M T. So what we've been doing is working with city staff since earlier this year of really drawing out the implementation process for implementing S B seven, forty-three on projects in the city. So we started by gathering some background data, looking at the V M T trends in the city, and I'll share some of those with you in a moment. Looking at different types of projects that could come into the city, which ones may or may not have a V M T impact. And then we worked through defining the appropriate V M T methodology and thresholds and potential mitigation measures. We are in the process right now of actually documenting all of this as part of new traffic study guidelines that will be given to developers coming into the city so that their transportation teams know what to do to satisfy the city requirements. And then we'll move on to the official approval and implementation. So there are various implementation decisions that we've been working through with the city. The first is really thinking about what types of projects require a V M T analysis. There are suggestions from the states about what types of projects may be able to be screened from doing detailed V M T analysis. I'll share the types of projects in more detail with you in just a moment that are appropriate for V M T screening. We also worked with the city to identify the appropriate V M T methodology. We have been using a refined version of the Southern California Association of Governments, or SCAG, travel demand model. Yeah, the city has a refined version of that model that was used for the general plan analysis. That was developed in the last couple of years, and that gave us a really good starting point for having good V M T data for the city. And then we had to decide what, what constitutes a V M T impact. What should the appropriate V M T thresholds be in the city? And then if a project is found to have an impact, what would those mitigation measures look like? And then again, finally documenting that in clear transportation study guidelines. So if you envision the transportation study requirements going forward in Santa Fe Springs, if you envision it really as a two-pronged and it could be parallel approach, one is what do we have to do to satisfy C Q requirements for our, all of our environmental regulations? And that analysis is really V M T, what we've been talking about now. What the city can continue to do is still look at the roadway operations, right? What's happening on the ground now? What does it mean with the project coming in? They can do that by looking at level of service at the adjacent intersections, looking at the potential impacts of truck traffic, and then looking at access to the site. So is there enough parking? Do the driveways work appropriately? Are there any improvements needed? So the traffic types of information you're used to getting in transportation studies, I'm sure for many years in the city, you will still get that information. It will just be outside of the C Q process, which in some ways gives you more flexibility of if you needed to make a change, or you have, you know, a question, or the site plan changes, it doesn't affect the whole environmental chain of what you have to go through in terms of recirculation and everything. It can be more based on what's acceptable policy for the city and based on your feedback. So there'll be two separate reports going forward. So we have a very short, it's about one minute video to show you.
What is VMT? VMT, or vehicle miles traveled, refers to the distance that a car travels regardless of how many passengers are in the car. So this car, traveling one mile, would generate one VMT. And four vehicles, traveling ten miles, would generate forty VMT. To understand how much VMT a person generates on a typical weekday, it's useful to map their travel throughout the day. In this example, Jess starts the day at home, drives to the coffee shop two miles away, and then heads to work, which is ten miles from the coffee shop. After a day at the office, Jess returns home eleven miles away. Later, Jess heads out and drives one mile to the gas station to fill up before driving another three miles to the grocery store, and then makes the two-mile trip back home. By adding together the miles driven, it has shown that Jess has generated twenty-nine VMT for the entire day. This VMT can be further categorized into the individual trip purposes that motivated each leg of the trip. VMT can be organized into three typical trip purposes. Home to work, or HW. Home to other, or HO. And other to other, or OO. This organization is helpful in understanding that trips to and from work tend to generate the most VMT because people are willing to drive longer distances as the benefit of the trip increases. Do you have other questions about VMT that you would like answered? Let us know.
Okay, so with that, just another quick reminder of what SB 743 is really intended to do. The state is trying to promote mixed-use developments that are in areas where people can more easily walk and bike and take transit. And again, think of that full impact of driving on our environment. And then also make sure that the other environmental areas that we've calculated for years that are kind of side effects of traffic, air, noise, and so on, continue to be addressed in the SEQA process. So those components of the traffic study have not changed. So when is a VMT analysis required? We've worked with the city to look at different types of projects and which may require a VMT analysis and which could be screened out. So this is based on state recommendations that have come out in their guidelines. So to give you an idea of the types of projects that you have to show they need screening but won't need to do a detailed VMT analysis, it's presumed to be less than significant, are small projects. Those can be defined as projects that generate fewer than one hundred and ten daily vehicle trips. Local-serving retail, so going back to that example that I was sharing of a smaller store coming in that's really meant to serve the community. In general, retail stores that are less than fifty thousand square feet can be considered locally serving retail and screened out. Projects that are coming into the city that are demonstrated to be in a VMT-efficient area, what we've done is help the city map out VMT in different zones of the city based on the modeling we have. And in the zones that where we know the VMT is lower and a project is coming into one of those zones, then it can be screened out. And also if the project is in a transit priority area, so if it's in an area that has transit service at least every fifteen minutes, it can be screened out from further analysis. Otherwise, a project will require more VMT study. So to set the VMT impact thresholds from the city, we use that more refined version of the SCAG model that was developed for the general plan that I mentioned. And this gives you an idea of what is the baseline VMT for different land uses in the city. This is the citywide average, if you think of the total amount of VMT in comparison to the service population, which is all of the people that live and work in the city. And then we also look at VMT on the residential side, how much VMT is generated by households in the city in comparison to how many people live in those homes, and then how much VMT is generated by the employment in the city in comparison to how many employees work in those locations. So we've done VMT estimates for all three types of those VMT. And then to not have a VMT impact, you have to demonstrate that your project has VMT that's at least fifteen percent below the existing citywide average. So you're showing that your project performs better than the average land use type in the city right now. That fifteen percent reduction threshold is based on guidance from the state saying that if we are not continuously reducing VMT generated by new land use, we will not meet our GHG reduction goals in the future. So when a project doesn't meet one of those four screening requirements that I shared, there's a few things that happen next. One is we built the city a VMT analysis tool, which I'll show you on the next slide. There may be larger projects such as your general plan or maybe a housing element update or just a major project in the city that comes in that you would want to see a more detailed VMT analysis for. In that case, we just compare the project's VMT to that fifteen percent reduction threshold in that prior table and determine if there's impacts and if mitigation is required. So this is a snapshot of what the city's VMT tool looks like. It's an Excel-based tool, so very simple for anyone with basic computer software that they can use the tool. And what it does is it allows you to identify the parcel number of your project and then put in the land use type for your projects. You can put in what type of residential units do you have? What types of commercial or employment uses do you have? And then based on all of the model data that we have from that refined general planned version of the SCAG model, we can pull VMT data from each of those zones and apply that to the project. So the project tells you if you're screened. So it does have a location component to it, which you see in the map there. That little blue dot kind of on the bottom left side of the city is where this particular project is located. So it shows you the project location, shows you, knows if you're close to transit because we've programmed all of the transit lines in that would be available. We've programmed in all those low VMT, VMT-efficient areas. So this allows the city staff, really within about five, ten minutes, to see with a project coming in, does it meet screening criteria? What would the VMT analysis look like if we had to do a full VMT study and then can go back very quickly to the applicant to let them know what the requirements are for their study? And they can also give this tool to applicant teams to use for their VMT analysis. And then they'll know it's consistent with their traffic study requirements. And then if a project does have a VMT impact, what we're really focused on is how can we reduce the number of vehicles driving to that site? So if we think of things like giving an employment hub, for example, free transit passes or encouraging carpooling or a van pool system, something to minimize the amount of driving that's happening to that site. And I'm going to turn it over to my colleague Martha Paulivan, and she's going to walk you through what you'll see in that second part of traffic studies when we're looking at roadway operations.
Sarah, so I'll talk about the non-SEQA portion of the transportation study guidelines. And first thing to note is that these were developed in consultation with city staff and the city traffic engineer. So just to start off, when is an LTA required? An LTA is required when a project generates over fifty vehicle trips in the peak hour. An LTA contains a level of service analysis that has traditionally been evaluated using Highway Capacity Manual, HCM, or ICU Intersection Capacity Utilization Methodologies. And as a reminder, LOS is a qualitative measure used to evaluate traffic conditions or impacts to drivers. So Project LTA will include the following, which includes project description, transportation circulation settings, analysis and identification of operational deficiencies like LOS analysis, traffic signal warrants, operational enhancement measures, onsite parking analysis, access and circulation analysis, and truck operations, which can include like truck queuing and truck auto turn analysis, seeing if they have sufficient space to maneuver about the project site. So those things do not go away. So, and again, this is just a reminder, this was developed in consultation with the city traffic engineer. Study locations of an LTA will include any primary project driveways, all signalized and unsignalized intersections within a thousand feet of primary project driveways, regardless of jurisdictional boundaries, and all signalized intersections within a half-mile radius where the project would add fifty or more peak hour trips regardless of jurisdictional boundaries. So that is the LTA, non-SEQA portion in a nutshell. And we're happy to answer any questions. I'll hand it over to Sarah for the last slide.
So again, we're here with you tonight just to let you know what we've been working on. Your staff have been fabulous to work on over the last few months. We will be coming back to you with all of this documented as part of transportation study guidelines, but we wanted to present where we were tonight to see if you have any questions. And then we can incorporate that in the final report as well. Thank you.
So I was just wondering, so this has already been implemented? How many projects have you had to do this study on?
So this VMT became a requirement in July of 2020. So we have done dozens. I mean, we have offices all around California. We've helped LA County as well as many other cities in the area update their traffic study guidelines and have probably done this on maybe twenty, thirty projects so far since July. No, I'm sorry, around the state. In Santa Fe Springs, the one project that has had to do a VMT analysis was actually a recent general plan. If you look at the EIR for the general plan, we did calculate the VMT impacts of the plan.
Any questions from the commissioners?
I have none.
None.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. I appreciate it. We appreciate it. Thank you, Kwan. Item number ten, announcements. Are there any commissioners that have any announcements that you would like to share?
Commissioner Carbajal? I'd like to announce that the Santa Fe Springs Women's Club is having their welcome back fashion show after a couple of years this Sunday. I'd like to also acknowledge and thank Director Wayne Morrell for your considerable donation. We appreciate it and we love Planning Department. Go planning. And then I had a question on our next meeting or something. Can we have an update on what is going on with Sonic again? And the closure date for SMP? And that's it.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
I have none.
And I have none. Are there any announcements from staff? Yes, sir. Mr. Colazo?
This Saturday, we have our catalytic converter etching program at Sorry Dreams. I'm sorry, yes, Sorry Dreams, no, here by the post office. And it's from eight to twelve. If you haven't signed up yet, please do sign up. Just call the PSC. You're entitled to one vehicle per family. So we're hoping we can have another one. We can add another car to the program. So come on over. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
I'll wait for last one.
Commissioners, as you know, October is National Community Planning Month. And as we've done in years past, we will also be doing a photo contest. We're going to start the photo contest early this year in hopes to get more people to apply. So be on the lookout for that.
Great. We love judging it. Yes, Mr. Morrell?
No other from staff, Teresa, nothing. Okay. Commissioner Carbajal, if you like, I can give an update now on both Sonic and SMP. That is totally at your discretion. And if anything changes between now and the next meeting, then I can give a further update.
Please, sir.
So for Chick-fil-A, which will be constructed on the SMP site, the goal is to get all permits in place, approved in September. Once that is done, then SMP will be given thirty days to vacate the premises. So that's September, October. Then in November, that's when demolition is supposed to occur. And then in December, that's when they should start construction. So that's SMP. For Sonic, we're still targeting November for construction to begin. I know there's numerous reasons for the delay, but part of the way the agreement was written is essentially to get all their approvals before they start any type of construction activity. So if it took a year, two years, and I'm not saying that they did this intentionally, that's just a timeframe. But there was some complications, including the left-hand turn lane as you go east on Florence Avenue onto the property. That's both the jurisdiction of the city of Santa Fe Springs and the county. So that took a while. But more so, there was allegedly an agreement with the adjacent property owner for a shared driveway. But allegedly, when the insurance company found out that the driveways would be shared, his premium went up sixty thousand dollars, allegedly. So as a result of that, even though it was alleged that there was an agreement in place that both the Sonic people and the adjacent property owner walked the site, discussed where the cross-traffic would occur. Notwithstanding, that did not move forth. So as a result of that, they had to shift the location of the Sonic building further to the east and then create a landscape strip on the property line. And that has to go back before not only the county for grading, but all public works department for the lid, the low-impact development. So last I heard is all of that will be wrapped up so that we can actually start construction in November. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
And again, if anything changes between now and then, I will let you know. I meet with Sonic every Friday that we're walking.
Thank you. Any other announcements? No other announcements. I would like to adjourn the meeting at 6:51.